I'm swearing in. Mr. Ryan May, your behalf of me. Hi, Jordan P. Longo.
Hi, Jordan P. Longo.
Do you swear that I will support the Constitution?
Do you swear that I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance?
And I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the U.S. Constitution and the law of the Constitution. And that I will protect my citizens and their lives. That I will defend the Constitution and the Constitution. That I will protect the Constitution and the Constitution. That I will protect the Constitution and the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution and the Constitution. And that I will protect the Constitution and the Constitution.
We get to jump in?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I was just gonna sit back here and like make faces.
One more person on that side.
If you don't know, Officer Longo also got first. Ever since.
We'll give the audience about three to four minutes before we proceed forward. Let them take some pictures. Congratulations again. Thanks for coming out, y'all.
Thank you.
Proceeding forward, councilmember's statement regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Would any councilmember like to make a statement tonight? Hearing none, I am proceeding forward to public comment pertaining to agenda and non-agenda items. To comment on a specific agenda item, after it is discussed by council, please sign up with the city clerk, and you will be asked to come forward at the appropriate time. Do we have public comment pertaining to agenda or non-agenda items? Okay, um, just, yep.
Paul, did you wanna, did you wanna speak now, or were you gonna hold your? Paul, Cluth signed.
Either, either's fine. Um, I can call you guys at the parking meter too, if you wanna keep it. Again, it's not gonna be a back and forth necessarily, but it'll be, come up and speak. So that'll be after council discussion. So you can do before or after, yep.
So if we, if, if folks wanna comment after the council discusses the matter, then they should sign up here with.
Yeah, just make sure you sign up there if that's the case. Um, up next, we have consideration review. Um, there is one item that was added, um, that I'll be asking council for a consensus, consensus tonight, so that staff can begin processing it. It is the leave buyout recommendation. We knew this was coming up, but we now have the hours and the total cost of it. Um, when we get down to it, we'll discuss further. Would anybody like a couple of minutes to read over it? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Resolution ordinances and agreements. Introduction ordinance twenty-two dash twenty twenty-five amendment defenses. Questions, comments, concerns by council? It's pretty much, it's the same thing that we saw, yeah.
It is. It's essentially just removing the permit requirement specifically.
So, with that, hearing nothing, I am going down to adoption ordinance twenty-one dash twenty twenty-five amendment to restrict industrial district. Any comments? Well, Jim, do you have something you wanna say before I get to that?
You go ahead.
Okay. Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, Jim, did you wanna say something?
As we, we talked briefly about this, uh, last, at the, at our last meeting, we're gonna, uh, asking to hold off on approval. We didn't want it to disappear from the agenda. But we, we think we still need to do a little bit of tweaking to that one before we adopt it. So it's actually gonna have to go back through the whole cycle.
Yep, so this will fall off, and I think, yeah, we talked about this briefly. It's gonna hit the seventy day mark.
Okay.
After that, any additional comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, I am proceeding forward. City manager report, Jim.
Not a whole lot new, since it's only been a couple of weeks since we, we met in November. Just, uh, charter and code update. Uh, we've got those two ordinances pending right now. That's really all that's, that's, uh, been developed at this point. We haven't put pen to paper on the site plan chapter revisions yet. As far as the Roberts Mill Road reconstruction, uh, we're kind of in a holding pattern right now. It's in the, the special counsel's hands, working with the, uh, bonding company and, uh, the subcontractor for the pavement out there. So hopefully, we'll see some movement after the holidays on that. I'm not anticipating a lot of exchange back and forth from the various attorneys at this point to occur over the holidays. Last thing I've got, uh, the Memorial Drive water service, uh, reconnections. You'll recall that initially, we had planned to replace, uh, the water main in Memorial Drive, and found out as we started to investigate what was actually in the ground, that we don't need to replace the entire line, as it turns out that it is ductile iron, which is what we want. We thought we had a lot of cast iron there, so unfortunately, uh, there's a, a dual water line running in Memorial Drive, but all the services for the houses are connected to the line that we want to abandon, uh, that, that is not ductile iron. Uh, so we have to reconnect everybody to the ductile iron line. Uh, so there's gonna be a lot of crosscuts across the, across Memorial Drive. So at any rate, uh, we met on the eighteenth, uh, to review the ninety percent plans, which really are the plans that are able to go out for bid and for permits, um, or for permits, rather. And, uh, we've already submitted our grading application and so on to the county for the project. So we laid out the projects, the, uh, timeline, and, um, we did extend the, decide to extend the water main up Church Street. Uh, there's a couple of services that, a couple properties that are not served from West Baltimore Street in the vicinity of Church Street. And, uh, there's also a stub that comes off of Baltimore Street. And the idea is eventually we'll be able to loop it back to the water main in West Baltimore Street, but we're not gonna do that right now. We're gonna wait until there's some other reason to go into the state highway right of way, um, to do that. So that'll be a future project, but we're gonna take the water line as close as we can without getting into the state highway right of way. So in the future, we'll be able to loop that, but that's just one thing that we decided to do since the last time we talked about the project. That's really all I've got since the last time we talked. Um, happy to field any questions, though.
Any questions, comments, concerns for the city manager? Hearing none, proceeding forward, department reports. Jim, do you have any additional stuff to add on that?
No, again, if there are questions, I'd be happy to try to answer or get you an answer for Monday.
Additional comments, questions, concerns regarding the department reports? Hearing none, proceeding forward to old business. Approval of revisions to general specifications for street and stormwater management facilities construction. Jim, do you have anything additional?
We did have some more conversation on that, uh, with the engineer, uh, but we haven't really delved into the street with, with the planning commission yet.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns from council regarding that? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Welcome sign. Um, again, we began discussion on this in November. There is a quote provided to council that just kinda gives you a, uh, a heads up on what that would look like if you went with a, just a regular base, without the LED, and then if you added the LED signs to it. Again, this is mainly for consideration. We're not moving on anything like that right now. But just keep it in mind, and we'll follow back up on it in January, unless anybody wants to.
For one or two signs?
So that's for one sign, if I'm remembering correctly. That's gonna be per sign.
About it. Thank you.
Yep. Additional comments, questions, concerns regarding it? Again, this is mainly for you guys just to digest, and we'll get back to it. Nobody's putting up signs in December. Hearing nothing, I'm proceeding forward. New business, monthly financial report. Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none, I'm proceeding forward. Accounts payables, questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none, proceeding forward, uh, leave buyout. So you guys should have a memo regarding the leave buyout. Where I put that? I'll read it out for the public as well, so they can hear on it. In twenty twenty-five, several staff members were unable to use their incurred leave in a timely manner or efficient manner due to essential duties related to city roles. These mission-critical responsibilities directly impacted their ability to take leave, resulting in carryover to the end of the year. It is further noted that even if this additional leave was, were carried over, it is unlikely that these employees would be able to adequately use it, given ongoing operational demands. Officer Longo spent most of the year at the police academy and is currently in active field training. The objective for any officer hires to ensure thorough training and swift readiness to support law enforcement and community needs. Since Officer Longo's time in the academy and subsequent field training took pres- ah, precedence, it was impractical for him to use his incurred leave in twenty twenty-five. Accordingly, it is recommended that council consider a leave buyout of a hundred fourteen hours at a cost of two thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety cents. Officer Klezak was sworn in a lateral new hire in October, but accumulated leave prior to this is, he was on the force, uh, again, prior to that swearing in. He has similarly been going, undergoing required field training, which must take priority over leave. Based on consensus with the chief of police, city manager, and myself, it is recommended to approve a buyout of sixty-four hours at a cost of one thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. And that's a recommendation for both Officer Longo and Officer Klezak, from me, the chief and city manager. City manager Jim, we pricked, assumed multiple department head roles during vacancies and accumulated both annual and compensar- compenser, uh, compensatory.
Compensatory.
Leave for additional hours worked. His leadership across economic development and planning and zoning and court enforcement amid a turbulent city period has been exemplary. Despite attempts to reduce his leave, operational needs made it impossible for Jim to use this time without impacting city functions. Therefore, it is recommended to approve a buyout payment for a hundred and ninety hours totaling ten thousand two hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. Jim is a vital asset to Tying Town's government and deserves fair compensation for his commitment. The total recommended leave buyout is fourteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. There is no need for a budgetary amendment currently, as leave is budgeted as a liability annually, in the annual budget. Any adjustments arising from buyout approval will be reflected in a mid-year budget amendment. Should there be any questions or concerns, contact me. For council, uh, additional comments, question, concerns regarding it?
I have a few questions, I guess. I was under the impression we had a, uh, a set policy as far as leave buyout or leave extension goes. Is this, this above and beyond that stated policy?
Hmm, I would say not particularly, because, again, you guys currently make that policy.
I mean, isn't, isn't there a, a formal plan outlining how, how leave is to be used? Which leave can be carried forward and which leave can't? Seems to me, we just swore in Officer Longo, and we're, we're paying him for leave that he hasn't taken. He hadn't been on the street, so I don't understand what that's all about.
And that's kinda, he won't be able to take that leave. It's kinda the same thing with Jim and Officer Klezak, is there is not gonna be any point in the near future that they will be able to use any of this leave.
Klezak's the same way. I mean, he's a transfer. He's, I mean, I, it seems like he, I don't know how he could accumulated the leave. Part of the, the training process, I would think, to be involved in the city. Work on a day-to-day basis. But, I mean, I thought you had to be here a certain amount of time before you accrued leave. I didn't know that it was automatic.
We, employees start accruing leave as soon as they're hired. Um, so in the case of Officer Longo, he couldn't take leave during his time in the academy.
Though he wasn't on the street, even though he was in the academy.
Right, so he's still.
He's still a hired employee.
Right, he was still employed by the city, so he still accrued, um, his holidays, um, and, and annual leave, just like any other police officer would, even though he was in a, a training scenario.
And, and I know you've, you've put in a stalwart job during the past year trying to cover a bunch of different departments at different times, and I really have a little, a little problem with what they're recommending for you, but, again, I don't understand why we don't allow the current policy to take effect, why we have to supersede that.
Because it wouldn't work, even if they carried it over, at no, they're not gonna be able to use it. We're just gonna come back to this next year, essentially.
My, uh.
The purpose of this, but.
Um, I, I understand Jim, 'cause he got the redheaded stepchild treatment while, uh, while everyone was out. Is, is this going to be kind of how, uh, how, how things need to go if we, if we, if we hire police officers? Is, is basically their first year of, uh, with, with training and such, is, is? Basically, I wanna see, is this going to be something we're gonna be looking at each year with, with new people?
For, for all future hires.
Um, or is, is this just timing worked out, and we were shorthanded, and we, we couldn't take, uh, we couldn't get all the, the leave in that we needed to, because we needed to have officers on the streets?
Well, I think in, in the case of the police officers, um, the timing of the academy played into it with this one. So, you know, Officer Longo just graduated recently. And, again, you know, he was unable to take any leave, you know, during, during the length of the academy, and, and then with field training, that's, that's ongoing. With Officer Klezak, uh, he came on, again, in, in October. And so at that point, other officers who have been with us had already scheduled their holidays and, and such. So, once he was done, his field training, their.
There was no room for him to take leave, essentially.
In order for us to have coverage for all the vacation or leave that other officers had already scheduled, he's not able to schedule leave and have the city maintain coverage because of things that have been scheduled earlier in the year. So, so the date that they came on board and, and were, you know, were factors in, in both cases.
Well, uh, basically, where, where I'm headed is, do we need to? I, I understand, and I'm not, I'm not against what, 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 what's pre- for us this evening. I understand what happened. I understand where we are. What I would like to know going forward, should we think about some other form of policy or something that we need to come up with to kinda cover these situations? If we've got, if we're, if we're hiring people and, and things like that, do we, do we need? And this, this isn't a, like, I need an answer right this second. This is putting it out there for, for everyone to think about. Do we need to revisit the, the, uh, the leave and the carryover policies and, and things like that to make sure that we can either buy out or carry over, or whatever we need to do in order to make people whole on things? Do we need to revisit that policy to make it a little more clear, a little more relevant to what we're, we're dealing with, or something along those lines?
Chief, if you don't mind, I actually have a question for you. It might actually tie back into this. So, when an officer takes leave, are we using overtime at all to cover some of that gapage?
That's, that's what I was kinda chomping at the bit to answer.
It's actually gonna be cheaper to buy the leave out than.
Right, we do have an alternative, and that is to grant Klezak and Longo, uh, okay, you wanna take this day off, but we still have to maintain coverage. So that would mean we would pay another officer overtime to cover those shifts. That actually would be more expensive.
Pay overtime and bonus leave.
No, it's, it's either or.
So that's the, that's the thing, is that, so if you don't do this, you actually end up paying more, because you're gonna have a more seniority officer covering those shifts and an overtime rate on, on top of that. So that's actually why we're suggesting part of the leave buyout, is because you actually save money by buying the leave out.
Right, correct. And, and councilman me, if I may, I, I think this is, um, and I appreciate your sort of long-term, uh, question. This is kinda unique, just by the timing of it. Because, again, Longo, who was just in here this evening, was in the academy, and he's required to have the, you know, minimum hours. If he were to have taken leave, he wouldn't have graduated from the academy, so that's, that's obvious.
How long is the academy?
It's, uh, six months. So, you know, so he's in there on the Fourth of July, that's a holiday, but he can't take off the Fourth of July. Uh, he's in there for, uh, Labor Day, Memorial Day, but he can't take off those days. So, if we were able to, he would kinda come out of there with like, you know, whatever, seven days to use. But then we look at our schedule, and we go, okay, where do we put him? Well, we can't, we can't put them anywhere if we give him that day off, then we gotta cover it with somebody else more.
So it, it, basically, it might, it might've worked out better, not saying that this is how things need to go, but it, like, theoretically, it would've worked out better if, like, academy started on January second.
Absolutely, yeah.
And then you had like six months worth of year to.
Yes, sir. Or if we hired Klezak in, uh, you know.
In the spring.
It, yeah, in the spring instead of October. He would've had a longer period, uh, to work that in.
Yeah, 'cause he, 'cause Klezak had the same issue with, uh, with a bunch of field training and things like that.
And that's why you're not seeing like other officers on this list, for instance.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's why I said, that, my own, like I said, I don't have a particular problem with what we're doing here, 'cause I do understand the, uh, the, the coverage that would have to happen. I'm dealing with it at, at my own, uh, work. So, yeah, I don't, I don't have a particular problem with this. I wanna, I just wanna see if, going forward, we need to more codify what, what we do for this to make sure that we're not coming back with something special. It's like, oh, yeah, we did this already, and here's the, here's the policy that we came up with for it. So, that's, that's, that's the only thing, I'm, and like I said, that's not something that's gonna happen tonight. That's not, that's, that's just.
It's possible we could be in a situation.
Yeah. Hopefully, we don't repeat Jim covering seven jobs, plus cook, bottle washer, and other things. So, um, 'cause I, I think Jim might fall over if that happened. But, uh, um, so I think that one's special. But I, like I said, I just wanna, if we can, uh, figure that out for the, the, the police folks, I think that might be a good thing going forward, but otherwise, I'm, I'm good for this.
And I think that's, again, kinda like the chief was saying, this is, uh, what, he started March, was it? For the academy? When did he start on the academy?
Yeah, I think, I think that's about right, yeah.
So that's, again, if you're gonna start, and again, we don't really control when the academy starts. But, you know, if he's starting that timeframe, if we're ever sending by, sending by through the academy, again, we're kinda gonna experience the same thing when we come back here. Um, kinda the same for hiring an officer towards the end of the year. Again, it's just two timeframes that kinda set up the scenario. But like you said, if he would've somehow got out in, uh, June or July, for instance, you know, he would've had half the year to start trying to take leave. So it's hard, 'cause it's.
My, my, my thought then might be just something along the lines of, in, in an officer's first year, with training and everything else, best, the best, uh, best effort will be made to take leave, but there is understood that there is going to be excess leave, and we can offer it. I mean, basically, something along those lines. I'm making it up as I go along right now.
I will say, um, when they come on, for instance, it does help us with the, uh, more tenured offers. Again, that kinda that overtime and everything like that helps us when those more tenured officers are taking leave. 'Cause, again, these guys, these guys have to be there anyways.
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm good with the principle of it. I have, I have no problems, and, and I'm good with what we've got on the paper. I just seeing whether we need to make some form of a policy so that we're not, so we're not reinventing the wheel again next time, when, when we've got another set of training that comes through, or something like that.
I appreciate your consideration.
Councilmember Cullonock, did you have anything? Just wanna check with you.
Nope, I think this is a good measure.
Councilmember Miller, councilmember Karen, you got anything, anything more? Um, Jim, do you wanna motion, or do you wanna consensus on this?
Well, we can.
I was gonna try to get it, get it underway.
Okay. I suppose a motion and vote would be the ideal.
Looking for a motion in regards to leave buyout.
I move to, uh, to perform the leave buyout as outlined in the letter.
Can action on this tonight?
Yeah.
That, yeah, he had, he had asked.
Staff can start working on it. I mean, if, it's either they can start working on it now, or they can try to cram it in starting next week. But there's not.
The current policy, before we move forward. Violating current policy in some way. Nobody's been able to answer that question for me. How does this differ from our current policy?
Well, current, current policy allows employees to carry over eighty hours of annual leave a year. For employees who get compensatory time, um, we are allowed to bank up to forty hours. However, in extenuating circumstances where through, you know, not the employees', you know, choice, just because they didn't schedule vacation, you know, if, if they're, if we're fully staffed and somebody doesn't use their leave, that's kind of on, that's on them. But if somebody can't use their leave because we're short-staffed.
Is that what's gotten us, did we promise them that we were compensating for this leave if they didn't, didn't take it? Is that what's, is that what's behind this?
Well, no, there's, there's been no, there's been no, there's been no promise made about it.
And Jim, for instance, Jim's been taking leave. I mean, the, one of the instructions I had for him when we actually got the department heads filled was use as much of the leave that you have incurred as possible. So we, so when we get to this point, um, again, it's reduced. But realistically, you should be compensated if you are unable to take leave due to mission demands. I mean, that's.
So, right, the, the reason we're before you is because our policy doesn't allow for leave to be bought out or more than forty hours to be carried over. And realistically, in both, you know, both my case and that of the police officers.
That's why we established the policy. We did, but we didn't. Prevent things like this from happening.
But it didn't prevent it from happening. It happened anyways, and that's why we're, we're trying to deal with it now to make people whole.
It's not like Longo had a choice in whether he took it or not. It was mandatory for him to be at the academy.
And, again, the council, whether it's today, or whether, if, or whether it's Monday, the policy can be changed with three votes.
I'll second the motion.
Who made the, who made the motion? Oh, okay. Additional comments, questions, concerns? And again, Jim, just checking, I know we already talked about this, but this is already budgeted in, right?
We have to, we have to account for, for accrued leave as a liability and, right, and finance.
Uh, any additional comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name? Harry's. Up next, we have parking meters. So let me read the memo on parking meters. Um, as everybody's aware, we had a, an initial discussion in November pertaining to the parking meters and the holiday season. Um, council consents that they would, they wouldn't, they wanted to forego enforcement on the parking meters until they have decided what to do with parking meters. So parking meters have now been added to the agenda for discussion. And I'm now going to read the memorandum of staff work regarding that so far. Dated today, staff and I participated in two conference calls this week exploring parking solutions that promote vehicle turnover without relying on parking meters. These solutions use sensors to monitor parking, enable free two-hour parking limits, and provide enforcement alerts for overstays. We have examined frog parking and EXACT park as primary examples with two provided quotes for your review. These quotes are pure, are inform, informal and purely illustrative of potential costs to the city. Uh, the key proposal details are sensor-based monitoring, replacing physical meters while ensuring turnover, free parking for two hours with automated alerts for enforcement beyond that. Quotes demonstrate feasible pricing structures for implementation. Administration requests council review of the attached materials ahead of the January workshop on metered and downtown parking. Staff will continue investigating additional options and share updates promptly. Please share any questions, comments, or alternative ideas for exploration. This is for informational purposes only with no immediate decision required, though feedback and direction is welcome. No provisions in the Towne Towne City Code, Chapter 193, Vehicles and Traffic, including Article 3, on metered parking or city charter directly governed sensor-based parking enforcement systems, turnover monitoring without meters or the referenced products. Current code authorized council to install meters by Resolution 193-16 and sets related rules max two-hour limits at meters under 193-22. But alternative technologies funder, fall under Council's General Authority for Parking Regulation C-401. It is my belief that nothing prohibits exploration or adoption of such systems pending any needed ordinance amendments. So again, just to briefly explain that, um, council is looking at ways to do turnover without parking meters. So open up the floor to council first. Council, any questions, comments, concerns? And again, you guys have the packets regarding those two systems. Um, just for anybody in the audience, those two systems are frog parking and exact park. Um, just to kinda describe what they do, in the middle of the parking space, there is a sensor that goes in the middle of it and it reads when a car comes over it. It then starts the two-hour, what, you can set the clock to whatever, but for our downtown, it's two hours. So it starts the two-hour parking clock essentially. Once that two hours has lapsed, the police get a notification digitally, hey, they have overstayed their welcome. Ticket then goes to get issued. Council, again, this is for your information. Um, we'll have this scheduled on the January workshop for additional discussion. And at that time, again, we'll kinda be looking for further, um, direction if there's a specific avenue council wants to explore. While I'm talking about this today, I just wanna ask council, you know, are, are we looking at the right path that everybody's kind of thinking about in their head currently? Or is there something else, uh, you guys want us to be looking at? And again, it, you could say, oh, I need some more, you know, I need December to really kinda think about this, but we're just trying to make sure we're heading in the right direction that you guys are thinking.
Uh, kind of processing at the moment.
Yeah, again, it happened just, I think, the one we had at 3:00 PM today, the other one was, uh, Tues- Tuesday, yeah, so yesterday. Um, so that we've had both those demos, uh, very recently. Again, I, I, I just wanna, are, concept-wise, are we kind of headed in the right direction? Is the idea to still do turnover without meters or is it...
Yeah, we, we need to have, we need to have some kind of like curb management system in place. I just think that meters are the wrong way to do it.
Okay.
Like, this is, this is, this is, this would be a market improvement to what we have, I think, in my mind at least.
Okay, and again, that's, that's kinda what we were thinking on our end. So we're just trying to make sure that, uh, the idea is still turnover.
My biggest concern...
Yeah, we don't want anybody, we don't want anybody sitting there all day. Um, that's, that's not what we're looking to do.
My biggest concern is still enforcement and the, uh, um... What, uh, what are the, I, we've got the costs in front of us for the actual, uh, the actual system. Um, I would need to look at what the, what the fines are, if the fines will actually cover the cost of either the system after, after a while or the enforcement that's ongoing. Just to see whether it is economically feasible for these things, just to, to, to keep it going. Cuz it's the same thing that we had with the, with the parking meters. The parking meters don't bring in enough, uh, to cover the enforcement measures that, that do happen, which I know there are some that, that it doesn't happen often enough for some people. So, uh, so that would be even more, even, even more, uh, money spent in that regard. So that, I would wanna see the whole picture of, uh, of what we're, what we're doing. So I'm gonna have to look, look up the, uh, the, the, the fine structure and things like that. Do we, uh, do we have any kind of, uh, idea? And again, this isn't it tonight, it, from the, uh, from the police, uh, kinda looking back at the chief, do we have any way of, uh, of categorizing how much time was spent on, uh, on parking enforcement? Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I, I don't imagine we're gonna have a fifteen minutes here, fifteen minutes there. Uh, it just, ru- rough estimates of, of... Yeah, how, what's, what's it take to, uh, to, to actually enforce, enforce things?
And again, that's, that's kinda the next question is even if you get how much, how long it takes to go up and down the street, how many times do you wanna do that a day? How many times do you wanna do that a week?
Well, my, uh, what, what I'm looking at is how mu- how many...
Yeah, what is being spent productivity...
Approximately how many runs are we doing on that sort of thing? Again, I'm sure that's not something that's actively catalogued, but if we can get some kind of an estimate of, yeah, we do that about two or three times a day or four times a week or whatever, whatever it ends up being. And that, that way, we can kinda get a breakdown of, of cost benefit of, of what we're, what we're looking at.
And I will say in relation to that, um, thinking of how much time the police are spending going up and down to look at all the meters, and then again, you kinda wanna weigh that against, uh, what is the economic productivity of having the meters? Cuz that's gonna be the next, cuz again, the, I'm gonna tell you, the parking meters themselves aren't gonna pay for the police officer's time. Neither is, neither would it with the new system, neither is it with the old system. Um, the question really comes is weighing, I guess, how much those parking meters are making along with is it, is it creating economic productivity in businesses? So that would kinda be, again, I think if you're gonna look at what we're making and how much it's costing, you have to take both of those into account. And again, that's a, that's definitely a harder one to measure because you gotta think of how many spots are, again, let's say, you know, Monday through Friday, obviously, a lot of those spots aren't gonna get used for businesses. There's only a couple of businesses that are actually open in the Monday through Friday days. Um, so there is no, there isn't much economic productivity being created there regardless of whether, um, it's free parking or not. Um, Saturday is gonna be one of your bigger days, Friday's gonna be one of your bigger days, and we already do what, free parking on Sundays, so... Again, Friday, Saturday would kinda be those days. Is, is it actually, um, is it beneficial? Are people actually, um, is it somehow getting people in front of businesses? Um, historically, parking meters deter business. I mean, that, that is a fact of parking meters. So just, again, I know we have a couple of business owners here, um, keep that in mind, that the studies do show parking meters are not beneficial to business. But again, just wanted to clarify that as well.
As I say, from a strictly personal standpoint, I never have change.
Yeah, I don't either.
Seventy-four.
I'd like to just point out real quick, um, with regard to Councilman Mead's comments about the, the cost of enforcement and versus the upfront cost and then the revenue generated by, by fines. Generally speaking, or broadly speaking, any enforcement activities the city takes are not gonna be revenue positive. It, it's, you know, whether, whether it be parking enforcement, law enforcement, code enforcement for municipal infractions, we're gonna spend far more doing the enforcement activity than we're ever gonna see in return on that investment by, you know, fines or, or other punitive measures against the violators. Um, so the idea of, of it being like transactional is really, I think, flawed because it's...
I didn't, I didn't think that it was going to, um, but what it then leads to is a, is a discussion of best use of resources. And that's kinda, that's kinda where, where the, where it would additionally, it would lead after that, but I wanted to have the backup first to, uh, to, before we go in, in that, that direction.
And again, I, I will say that's one of the main reasons we're kinda looking at the, uh, the sensor to turnover because that does notify the police directly of what spot to go look at. I would say the amount of time is really gonna be spent going up and checking the meters to see whether they're turned, you know, turned over, whether somebody's paid it or not. Um, that's gonna be the bulk of the time of the current meters. Um, but with the sensor, the, if, from remembering the demo, um, you know, it shows each parking spot, they're labeled, gives them an alert, even all of our police officers are issued phones now. Um, they can, uh, you know, they have, there's an app that'll basically tell you if it's over the meter time. So again, it's more...
Yeah, as I say, it's, it's a much more efficient system than...
But it is costlier, that, that is without a doubt.
It's, it's a much more efficient system than, than meters. It's...
It's costlier money-wise, but productivity, I think, is where you, you're gonna kinda make that back. So, um, that, that is just the only thing it considers, that productivity you're going to regain from not having an officer go up and down. Again, there's, there's a lot to weigh on it. Councilmember McCarron, did you have anything?
No, I, it's, it's, uh, an approach if we enforce it. Profit, you, parking meters have never been a profit center. I mean, that, that's the purpose of parking meters. Parking meters are...
And I think that's why we're looking to do away with it, yeah.
Keep the businesses, uh, parking spaces available for the businesses. That's the important thing. And what, whether we use what we have now or we come into with some sophisticated twenty-first century system, place gotta be enforced. I've, I've, uh, never favored parking meters at, at streets. I tried to rid of the parking meters and our business community came to sit along with our brothers and sisters.
It's a...
Decided we were gonna keep this parking meters, so... But, uh, the, 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 the question has always been, it's like, uh, has the ability to enforce it? If we, if we don't enforce it, it's like it is. If we do enforce it, then it probably works fine.
And that's, and again, I would say that's exactly why we're, uh, cuz it, for me as mayor, for instance, it's weighing that productivity of how long it takes an officer to go up and down, how many times we need to do that a day as opposed to it, e- even if it costs more, just a simpler system where it's not taking my officers, you know, an hour to go up and down the road to check all the meters. Again, rev, we're not looking for revenue. I think everybody, that's one thing everybody's agreed on, we're looking for the turnover. And these are kinda the perfect systems, I'd say, for it, but with a cost, and that has to be realized that it does have a cost.
Well, the, uh, the, the only other thing that I'd add on especially, especially parking meters, but even on, on, on this system, this system's better for what I'm about to say, but parking meters are especially bad for it is, are we encouraging the residents to come down to the downtown area? I mean, we, there's lots of talk in, in the comp plan and everything else about walkability and everything else. As I prove on the regular, I walk from my house to City Hall almost every meeting. And it's most of a mile, and I am not, I am by far not one of the farthest-flung citizens from, uh, from, from the downtown area. So people are going to be driving their cars, especially when it's cold, especially when it's really hot. And aside from physical attraction of getting the people into downtown, now, we're, this adds an extra layer of, and not only that, but now we, now we want you to, to pay for the privilege of, of coming to downtown.
The hassle.
So you're, it's starting to, it, it's, it, it starts to add up, um, for, for getting, getting people to come downtown.
Miller, you got anything?
I agree with a lot of Harry's points, like, uh, it's, it's more efficient, um, for our officers especially because, like you said, they're not taking that hour to go all the way down the street and they get the ping on their phone, so that gives them more time to go to our residential areas that are facing speeding issues right now. And there's a lot of them out there, so I think this is way more efficient for sure.
Councilmember Collinock? Did you have any additional?
I mean, I do, but the more I talk, the more it coughs up.
I know, I know, I'm sorry, I just didn't, I didn't want to not give you an opportunity.
I'm, 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 I'm good for now. If I need to talk, I'll talk.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Again, just, uh, review, between now and January, you know, please review the packets that we gave you regarding, uh, frog parking and exact park. Um, and again, keep in mind those, uh, pricing points that they have on there. Those are not by any means firm or sound numbers. This was a very, uh, you know, we asked them right after the meeting, can you put something together so our council can start considering what those costs look like? And again, there's other systems out there and we're gonna continue looking and try to get those over to you guys before the, uh, January workshop. With that said, I open the floor to public comment pertaining to parking meters. If you are signed up, please come forward.
Good evening, Chris Tillman, Ten York Street, George is on York. Uh, I, I wanna thank you for looking into this, um, and, and for your acknowledgement that we do need to maintain the turnover, uh, of cars. So let me, I just wanna ask, first of all, if I understand this correctly, uh, with the censored system, we're not actually, actually asking people to pay to park. We're simply saying if you're there for more than two hours, you're gonna get a ticket.
Correct.
And I, I love that because now nobody has to worry about getting a, a parking pass from a business. Nobody has to worry about feeding a meter, uh, and I think that those are both great things. I think our, our meters are a, um, a relic of the past, and I think that they need to be gone. Uh, and so I am a hundred percent behind getting rid of the meters and replacing them with a system, uh, that, that assures turnover. A couple of things, one of the things that we do have some issue with, um, is that, uh, we do have some cars that are parked long-term currently in the, you know, in, in metered spaces. Uh, I know there's a car that's been parked in a spot across from, across the street from us for several days in a row. I know that that happens in other locations. I know that there have been, um, times when there have been discussions about people parking at a metered space in front of somebody's house and they say, oh, no, that's my, that's my space, you can't park there. Well, there's a meter there, this is public parking. So, um, if we can start, you know, if this helps to work towards resolving those sorts of issues, that's a great thing, a very, very positive thing. Um, one of the other things I would suggest that, uh, there is a run of, of, um, uh, houses from fifty-six down to the Country Kitchen, uh, on that side of the street, uh, where there are no, where there are all houses. There are no actual businesses in that location, so we might wanna think about not actually metering some of those spots in there. Um, you know what I mean? Let those residents park there, there's no reason not to, there's no, um, no businesses there. And so that's not, you know what I mean? So, and, and if you, if we're putting these sensors in the pavement at all of the metered spots, that's something I think that's probably flexible in the system. You know, like, you know, we don't have to monitor these three, four spots or whatever. So I think it's a great idea. I like the idea of what you guys have, are, are looking at, uh, in terms of the sensor, in terms of the no, uh, you don't have to pay anything. I think that, uh, whether... I think that whether or not two hours is the right amount of time will kind of come out of how this functions down the line, but I think that this is a, this is a good start in a direction that helps the downtown community be able to attract more and better businesses, because it takes away one of those big things that does detract from business, which is the parking meters. So, but to Councilman Mead's point, I think that if you're not having to pay anything to come downtown, then you may come down more often. So I think that that's a good plan, and I like it. So, thank you.
Before the next folks speaker, I did wanna add one thing. When talking with both the vendors that we talked to thus far, so far, all the vendors we talked to do have like pilot programs. For us, you know, one of the major concerns is whether this can be implemented through the state streets. So one of the, council, when you look through the packets, the pilot programs that they're kinda quoting for, for instance, is the parking spots out here at City Hall, and that'd basically kinda give us a test run of what that system looks like, the data we can get and stuff like that, cause we can do that without...
Yeah, before I finish completely, a quick question about the actual physical structure of this. So is this like an RFID kind of thing that you're actually planting in the pavement? There's no wires involved, not that we don't tear any streets up and do anything like that?
That they get planted in, and they do have maintenance that has to be done on them, but our local guys can do the maintenance on them. The, there's a, since we're in a snow area, there's a certain one that we have to get that is different than the other ones.
Right, vobles.
Yep. So like on, you know, California, for instance, they can do ones that have the solar on top of them. For us, we do have to get ones that are flush along it, so. Again, and when we talk to the vendors, they're familiar of working with like state agencies and whatnot to get these types of things done, but the idea is if council did decide to do something like this, we would want to pilot test it in the city parking lot first to make sure we are capable of doing that implementation. So again, I just wanted to speak on that for council as well.
And I think you probably will do better, you'll probably get more efficient use out of it, and probably a better return on enforcement than you ever would get from quarters out of the meter. So just off the top of my head, I just, it seems like this is a good idea, and thank you.
Thank you. And Paul, you'd be next?
Earlier today, earlier today, I did send out an email to everyone, mayor and city council, and my remarks, I'm going to revise those as of this moment, because it was based on the assumption that the city was looking to do away with the parking meters altogether, or any kind of a system. So in the spirit of transparency, you know, I certainly appreciate your sharing a full rationale for these changes. And what I heard tonight with this new, bringing this new system, sounds like it's right on target. I think it answers a lot of the issues for the folks who see the parking meters as a deterrent, no matter whether it's profit-driven or not. Turnover is the key, that is the key. I will comment that a police presence periodically checking for violations is not a bad thing, and is also a big deterrent. And we like to see the police officers on, you know, on the main street, the downtown city streets. I mean, it's a good thing. So let me go to the reason why I was very concerned, and it is specifically in my case, but it applies to somewhat, to some of the other businesses. So as an example, the two-meter spots, which is meter number 27, in front of Ambassador's and Kim's Dance Studio, that is two through, that's number two through eight Frederick Street, must continue and must continue to be enforced with parking fines. So I've had a real problem with tenants from the corner apartment building, parking illegally without feeding the meters for long periods of the day, sometimes days at a time without getting ticketed. So what I'm saying here is that renters in particular will take advantage of the free parking as if it's their own personal property to park. It interferes with those who need to park for short periods of time in front of the business, or quickly unload, say groceries if they are a tenant. In the case of the dance studio, you know, I've observed it interferes with the drop-off of children for class by their parents, especially on Saturday morning. You have to understand, some people have no respect for others' need for short-term parking in this town, and for drop-off, or for the open businesses. Free-sitting parking passes for business can't even be used in that case, because people are hogging the spaces. I've also know from recent discussions with fellow businesses near the square, they are also opposed to the removal of the parking meters, you know, altogether. Each has their own rationale in addition to mine. Anyway, I do like the sound of the direction that you're heading, I think it's a good way to go, by all means, and thank you for your serious consideration of this challenging issue in our downtown.
Can I ask you a question, Paul?
Nick has a question. Paul, Nick's got a question for you.
Yes, Nick?
Hey, so I saw your email, and I wanted to ask, what's your impression of people being against removing meters? Was that because they assume that we're doing nothing in its place, you think, or...
Yes, absolutely. I believe that was the case, because it became a red flag for those of us who are totally annoyed by people who park illegally, according to the parking meters, and take advantage of the situation, and very frustrating. For example, I had one vehicle that sat in front of the store for 10 days. They were a tenant, and it was a crew cab, and it was a large vehicle, and then during the month of, I believe it was September, when we were open on Saturdays, you know, they, see, the big vehicles tend to block the front of the stores in some cases. And here's the other thing, is some parking spaces are certainly higher demand than others, so those that are right at the square, everybody is jostling to grab those, obviously. So, you know, if they're not limited to the amount of time that they can park there, it really is unfair to others. I mean, if you were to do a survey, you'd probably learn that, but I think you're, you know, again, you're headed in the right direction. I really, I like the sound of what you're exploring, and, you know, as long as you can make that happen.
And that's kinda the, you know, the hardest issue, and I will tell you, part of what kinda spurred this on the admin's side, when we started looking into it, was again, state highway is preempting spots a bit. They are assigning spots to people. So that's kinda the hassle of, not necessarily the hassle, but us ticketing individuals, I would say, is part of what resulted in an individual getting a spot assigned by state highway. So just keep, again, keep that in mind, I know what you guys are asking for, but the state's kinda making it clear that they will give people parking spaces if they need to.
Well, those aren't their official capacities, and, you know, the city or whoever, you know, it's, that's an exception, that's fine. I'm just worried about the people that have no respect for others and take spaces as if it's their own parking place, you know. Fortunately, the way we're headed is, I think we'll solve that problem. So, I've talked enough, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Nick, did you have anything more?
Nope, that was it.
Roger that. Yep.
Just one more question, because Paul brought up something, and when you said the assigned spaces, I assume you mean the handicap spaces that have been assigned? So, cause one just suddenly showed up in front of our building about two, three months ago, but they're not like, you can't just go to the state highway and, you know, give them 100 bucks and say, here, can I get, this is gonna be my space now? Is that only based on whether or not there are disabilities involved?
Yeah, so we got notice of it, and there isn't, so there was one to begin with, and we, you know, we were basically notified that there were more applications for more spots. So it is disability-based, and I will tell you, in that general area of downtown, we do have a number of handicap residents. So I know people want us to be out there giving them more and more tickets, but what I recall from what basically state highway said is they believe we're hassling people who have legitimate disabilities that need parking spaces next to their houses to get to where they need to go. So that's my only ask, is be aware that that increased enforcement and that ask, and us getting called out there to actually give tickets.
So I think that, you know, obviously, and this may require a little research, but how other municipalities handle that, I mean, there still should be some sort of, of course, if those, I mean, if those are designated spots for designated people with disabilities, you know, if somebody else with a disability can certainly park there, you know, cause it doesn't, it's not reserved for ex-person, but is there any mechanism for requiring any turnover in those spots? And it's a question to be asked, and there must be a best practice out there somewhere, and, you know, obviously, since it's new to us, we don't really know what it might be, but I can see, you know, where if we start getting too many of those out there, then we're back into where we don't wanna be.
Yeah, I will say, that's kinda the issue with that spot, though, is, you know, it isn't just paying a meter, right? Cause they get extended, they get extended parking, so even if the meter's expired, technically we wanna know whether they...
And generally speaking, the spot that's in front of my house is for the gentleman in the apartment right next to us, and that is for his rideshare, kinda, you know, so those folks have a place to park without the tail end of their car being out in the lane, and without blocking my driveway, cause that's generally what happened, what has happened in the past, is that they, if there's a car in the first parking space, they pull up in front of my driveway gate and park there, and load and unload for him. So, I mean, he doesn't actually have a car, he doesn't use a car, and so it's not really an issue on my corner. I know that over by the dance studio, there's a spot there for someone who lives in the building, who lives in Dr. Tate's building.
Yeah, I was gonna say, cause there's another one.
But that's, and that's somebody who uses their car much more regularly, so, you know, we just...
And that was the first, that was the first one.
We just need to be conscious of that and figure out what that looks like and what the best practices are regarding handling those spaces.
And I'll say, if the idea is you can meter those as far as like time goes, again, the current parking meters are not, we're not gonna be able to enforce that that way. It would have to be one of the newer systems. Again, I'm only saying that because that is kinda what started really, we gotta do something different than what we have out there.
And so, and also, so many of our parking meters, you can hardly even read the little, the hours and stuff inside the meter, because the plastic is just so yellowed and faded and scratched and unreadable, so, you know, like I said, certainly they're a relic at this point, especially given today's technology, but, you know, I understand at the time that they were put in, it was the best thing we could do, but times have changed, so, thank you.
Appreciate it. Additional comments from council before I proceed? Hearing none, proceeding to CDM Smith 2026 rate schedule. Jim, did you have anything you wanna add to this before I went to council?
No, I think the memo that's in there sums things up nicely.
Additional questions, comments, concerns from council?
I will add that we are definitely satisfied with the service we've been receiving from CDM Smith. They are very much back on track from where they were several years ago.
Hearing no additional comments, I'm looking for, what are we...
Is CDM Smith who we got Arrow through, or...
No, no, no.
Okay.
Arrow's who we got the subcontractor through for the comp plan.
Okay.
So you got CLSI, you got CDM Smith, you got...
Oh, mhm. My favorite people.
CDM Smith, we were having some issues, what, back 2023, I think is when I remember that meeting, but we're...
We had a couple of projects that they were designing for us that languished in the design process, and, you know, we ended up seeing some increased costs as a result of those delays, and we sought out alternate engineering firms to do some work during that period, and frankly, they haven't worked out to, to, to our benefit either. So we worked through the issues with CDM Smith, and their service has been back to the levels that it was in previous years, so, yeah, totally separate from Arrow.
I gotta ask.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns from council? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion of adjournment.
Question to adjourn.
Looking for a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Nick.